Good evening. And today is Tuesday, February 14th. And this is the Policy Committee here in the North Boardroom. And we have Dr. Poska here, myself, Christina Darling, Ms. Lampier, and one of our student reps, Mr. Castellano. And so let's get right into it.
Do we do the pledge for committees?
No.
Okay. So the first policy that we have up today is ACE, Procedural Safeguards, Non-Discrimination on the Basis of Handicap/Disability. And Dr. Poska, would you like to speak on that?
Sure. Thank you. One of the things that we've talked about with this one, and this is a policy from 2008 that needed to be updated. What has come out from the NHSBA, and unfortunately it did not get added to the packet. And what we're trying to do now, and what Ms. Raymond has suggested, is when we are referencing some of the NHSBA policies, to try to provide those in the packet as well, so you can see the reference of where this is coming from. With ACE, Procedural Safeguards, this is a policy that is required by law, but it's also, you know, it's necessary that we have it in our own procedural handbooks, which we do. So what NHSBA is saying is you can keep this in here, but it is duplicative because we have it in another place. So I guess my recommendation would be, what they are asking is kind of have a note or some type of notation here saying that this is what the procedural safeguard is, and it can be found in, not only in our own protocol book, but also in the New Hampshire Department of Education Procedural Safeguards Handbook. So I don't know if you would like to table this and come back with a cleaner version for this, which we can certainly do, but I think the piece of it is, we will need to update it, it's a matter of how we want to update it. Sure.
So, you know, I looked at the New Hampshire procedural guidelines, and it's so confusing, and it's all legalese and everything, and this seems to be laid out so clearly that it made me wonder if people would have trouble. And I didn't, I didn't know if the, if the Nashua School District has their own procedural handbook that they hand out, or that they, and how often they give it to parents, and also like if it's in all the different languages and stuff.
Anything with, you know, when you're doing a 504 meeting for a student, they will receive some procedural handbook at the start of that meeting. Same with an IEP meeting, you get a procedural handbook reference at the start of the meeting. And to your point, it is very legalese, you know, where it is not, you can kind of use a friendly to read it, but it is by law that we have to provide that.
I believe we provide it every single meeting, too, right? Like all the follow-up meetings get it, and I have so many copies.
Is there any, I mean, does Nashua have its own that's as clear as what we have here?
I can't, I don't have a copy on me to kind of reference the, I know what you're trying to say, like, is there a user-friendly copy that we can look at to be imparted here, and, you know, where did this come from? My guess is that this is, for the most part, probably about right, but since it is from 2008, I bet you it would need to be updated. So if you'd like me to go back and look at what we currently have for our procedural handbook, if it is, you know, wordy and verbose, do we want to just have the reference that the NHSBA is recommending, that, you know, you can reference it here, and then we don't have kind of the duplicative actions?
Okay. I like that idea. What do you think, Christina?
No, I agree. And actually, I would love to see if it would be possible for us to include something that is easy to understand for parents going through this process, that could be included with the procedural handbook, because, yeah, I've never been able to read through that book. It does not make sense to me. And it's hard to find people to advocate and help you understand the terms and the differences between 504 and IEP, and what your rights are. And I, I think it would be really cool if we could come up with a document to give them with that handbook that breaks it down, you know, a four-dummies version, even with cute little stick figures.
So I'll go back and I'll look to see what we have, and I'll kind of review that, and I'll bring that back. And when we're planning for the next meeting, I'll, I'll share this with Ms. Raymond of what we talked about here, and then we can, you know, at least bring both versions back to see what you need, as we want to talk about what we want to move forward, if anything.
Perfect. Do we have to motion to table it?
Right, motion to table, yes.
So I will move that we table.
I second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I like the two-people meetings. It seems so weird to go through the, the whole voting process. So the next policy that we have up is BEDL, Approval of Expenditures.
Okay, then, in addition, so we're starting with BEDL, but then we have a few more policies under the, kind of umbrella of Mr. Donovan and the Finance Office. So I have kind of worked with him and got his input on this. So BEDL is something that, you know, is in place, basically talks about, you know, notifying the board when we're utilizing funds, and make sure the accounts match the, the account numbers match where we're pulling the money from. So again, although this is not required by NHSBA, it is something that we do put into practice here in Nashua. So Mr. Donovan thought it would be fine to keep this in place as it is.
Any questions?
No, I didn't have any questions on this one. It seemed pretty simple, it's short, and, you know, it's really clear, so I don't see why we would want to change it.
For anyone who's questioning what BEDL is, it basically says, "We can't spend money without making sure that the money is there first," which I think is very irresponsible. So I move to approve BEDL as written.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I would say she is on her way. Policy number three, DBJ, Transfer of Appropriation.
Yep. Excuse me. So again, this is kind of the idea of what we're doing with our money. We have referenced NHSBA, and I think that was provided for you. One of the things we just want to make sure we're doing what it is, says we're doing. So the recommendation is, through the RSA, is to talk about adding provisions from RSA 3210, which is a recommendation from the NHSBA policy. So in the first paragraph, that is a recommendation to add the RSA and to note it there. In the second paragraph, it talks about, you know, "Any transfers in excess of $5,000 shall first require," or recommending that it just said, "shall require board approval." We're recommending the removal of the third paragraph, because that is not the policy and the procedures that we're following here. And that is the recommendation at this time for policy DBJ, Transfer of Appropriation.
Any questions?
Yes. Does the President of the School Board, you know, do this approve emergency transfers in other towns and cities?
I don't believe so, and that's why I think we're asking to be removed. This is not the policy, that this is not the actions that we follow, what we followed in Nashua this time. So the recommendation was to remove that.
Okay. The other question I had was about the legal references, RSA 22A:713, and it says unemployment compensation. And I was kind of confused as to why that was there, but I looked into it, and it's actually RSA 22-A:713, it's actually like a subpart of this, and it says, the title is actually Payment of Contributions by County, City, State, or Other Political Subdivisions of the State. So then that made sense to me. So I didn't know if that was something that we should change, just for clarity, or if it was okay to leave it the way it is. I, I'm not sure about that, so.
That's a great question. I did not get that deep into that RSA. I do know that in the NHSBA policy, they do still reference that RSA.
Okay.
So, and again, this was last updated in, revised in 2013 from the NHSBA. And we had not updated it since 2009.
Yeah, it was just really the title, and I was confused, so I looked into it. But I mean, I don't have any problem with the title. I, I just didn't know if it was something that we should change for clarity, but if it matches the, the state board, then I don't see why we should change it.
I agree with that. And I was going to ask the same question, is there any other town where this is their system? So I move to accept DBJ, Transfer of Appropriation, with the changes highlighted.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Trying to give you a minute to catch up. So we're going to move right along to DBJR, Procedures for the Transfer of Appropriations.
Okay. Again, this had not been updated also since 2009. There's some historical significance for this, because I think that this came about based upon a, some fiscal shortages at that time, particularly pertaining to special education. So there was a special trust that was created at that time to, to address any shortcomings for special education, because many of those, you know, things were have to be, were required by law to fund. So they wanted this, certain monies in a fund for that. At this time, the recommend, the fund has been changed to number 7074, so that is one of the recommendations at this time, but then to keep everything else as is. So in essence, this is kind of an emergency fund. Anything, anytime that money is pulled from this, the Board of Ed has to be advised and get aware of this. There's currently approximately $200,000 in this account. So it is an account that still has monies in it.
You said $200,000?
Yes.
Out of curiosity, do you happen to know if there are any plans for those monies yet?
No, I think it's specifically, you know, for unanticipated expenses as they come up. So I think it would be more of the, you know, I know, I'm not a financial person, but it's the rainy day fund, if something came up and we got, you know, there's a significant out-of-district placement came up that we couldn't afford, or something to that effect. I do not believe it has been utilized in the last several years, but there is, you know, the, the account is updated to, you know, reflect the actual account number, and the account does have monies in it.
Lovely. Good to know. Any questions?
No, no, thanks.
All right. So I move that we approve DBJR, Procedures for Transfer of Appropriations, with changes as noted.
Second, sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
Already on number five, Heather would be so proud of us if she was here right this moment. We are looking at policy DI, Fiscal Accounting and Reporting.
Again, heavy on the fiscal part of it here, so in reference to Mr. Donovan, this is really what we do, with the exception of that second paragraph with the updates that are made, talking about providing the forecasts in, kind of at the conclusion of the budget season, letting them know whether there is a potential surplus or deficit in the previous year's fiscal budget, in notifying the Board of what that surplus or deficit is.
Okay.
So the recommendation is to, to keep this policy with the recommended update.
It sounds good to me. I mean, we don't really need the quarterly statement if we get it every month, so there's no reason for it.
And that's the point that Mr. Donovan said, because at any time, you may request, you know, and also an update. So he is, particularly, you know, probably after January, you're getting more, you know, regular updates on where we are with the budget, and at any time, you can request that. So that was the kind of the conversation that we had, and then talking about the, the other forecasts for later in the spring, towards the end of our fiscal year, as we're trying to wrap things up, and letting, you know, the, the Board and the city know where we stand with our, our budget from that year.
I move that we accept DI, Policy DI, with changes as noted.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next, we have DIR, Fiscal Accounting and Reporting Regulations.
Again, it's just a follow-up on DIR, and it kind of just outlines the, the process and the information that will be shared out, and what that means. This is, again, a policy that is, it's recommended, and right now, we are currently in, in lock step with what the NHSBA is recommending. So what we're asking you is to update this policy as it currently stands with no changes.
Questions, comments?
I was looking at the, the first one that says DI, Fiscal Accounting and Reporting. Is that the one from the state, or is that the one that we have?
In DIR?
Yeah, I mean, this, so after, it says DI, and then the next page, it says DI, Fiscal Accounting and Reporting, Category R. And then the page after that, it says DIR, Fiscal Accounting and Reporting Regulations. So I'm not sure which one we're approving, I'm sorry.
Sure.
I mean, it's page, page 10, I think.
So on DIR, what we're asking is that, that first, DIR, we're asking you to, so it's the third one down, so if you go through DI, DI, and then it goes, still DI, and then it goes into DI-R, and it says, "The National Board of Education Policies." So that's the current policy that we have.
Okay.
And then it's IHAK. But in between, I think there is the, where it says Fiscal Accounting and Reporting, that's kind of the, well, it's continuation thereof from the, from DI. So it goes a little bit out of, out of order.
Oh, I see. I see. Okay. All right. That sounds good. Thank you.
It's not, I think it's just, the pages go out of order.
Okay.
So what you're seeing is, when you see DIR in the packet, DI-R, we're asking you to kind of, to approve that as is with no changes. And that is our recommendation, that we continue, we've reviewed it, it is in compliance with the, with the policies, and we want to continue to go forward with that as it is.
And for the record, Ms. Raymond has joined us at 6:25, and if you would like, I can hand the reins over to you on the next policy, or?
Yeah.
Okay.
So I apologize for my tardiness, and thank you guys so much for running this. And I see that you put me far, far away from everyone as punishment.
I was originally over there.
So I'll catch up in just one second.
Beautiful. So on policy, I move to approve Policy DIR, Fiscal Accounting and Reporting Regulations as?
As is. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Giving Ms. Lampier just a moment to catch up. The next policy is going to be IHAK, Character and Citizenship Education. Dr. Poska?
I think Ms. Raymond timed their arrival perfectly to just talk about this. So this was a policy that we had previously brought forward last month. It was tabled to get additional inquiry is to, on number five, in the, in our previous policy, it said pursuant to RSA 186:13, the Rights and Responsibilities of Citizenship. So there's a question about where does the RSA, what is the RSA referencing, or what is the purpose of that RSA at that point? Ms. Raymond then reached out to the New Hampshire School Board Association and got some feedback on that. And I'm going to paraphrase it, and I'm sure Ms. Raymond will kind of speak a little bit more to it, but it's, it's kind of an interesting tidbit in the sense that this was an old RSA, goes back to the 1920s, in reference to, you know, funding and the importance of Americanization. And this RSA came about due to the Red Scare. And there was a need to continue to kind of push back against communism, so that's why the RSA was originally created, and then it was put in this Character and Citizenship Education to make sure we're teaching Americanization in our classrooms. I think I captured that almost like you said.
I think you did quite well. It was, I had an actually really fascinating conversation about history and world history, and how to, you know, how it interacts with New Hampshire. And basically, back in 1919, we're talking about the time that is the end of World War I, and the beginning of the Russian Revolution, and the rise of communism in Russia. And at that time also, there was a large influx of refugees to the United States. And so this legislation was enacted all the way back then to help guide our public school systems, so help people to integrate into society and democracy here. And it simply hasn't been changed in 100 and, what is it now, 103 years? Four years? 104 years? The way that it works in RSA 18613, is that statute is regarding appropriations, and what things can the state spend money on in our education. And so Americanization also covers some of that, like civics education. So I know we've had some civics requirements over the last couple of years in state law. This is not related to that, but that's the statute, the 18613, is what allows for money to be appropriated towards anything having to do with that kind of civics education. So it was a nice, like, deep dive. I was fascinated.
So I think at the end of the day, we, you know, based upon the conversation that Ms. Raymond had, we were removing pursuant to RSA 18613 from our policy. And that is the recommendation at this time, is to, you know, accept the minor changes that we've, that we've outlined, which includes removing that RSA from our policy.
Any questions?
Did that answer it, Ms. Lampier?
Yes. I was disappointed, because I, you know, reading this with the two policies together, I thought we weren't going to be able to take it out, but I'm so happy that we are. It just seems so, you know, unfriendly to our immigrant community. So this is great. Thank you. Thanks for doing all the work.
I move that we approve Policy IHAK with the minor changes as outlined.
I just have one question.
Oh, no, please.
So on the, on the, on the packet that we got, it doesn't have the RSA 18613 to Americanization removed or in red, so I worry that if we approve it, it will go through the way it is.
In the, it's not struck in the, you're right, it's not struck in the policy, but it's not included either. I can follow up with Ms. Kinsella to make sure that, you want to see the strike in the policy?
I mean, if you guys say that, that it's okay if we approve it, that they'll, that they'll take it out, then I'll approve it, you know? I mean, I just wanted to make sure.
That it's removed from the policy?
Yeah.
Yep.
So based on what I understood of my conversation with the attorneys up at Concord, we don't need that as a legal reference. So we could strike it under Legal References as well, because the Code of Administrator Rules 30604 and 30606 cover the rest of the policy.
Okay.
So it should be all right. And that's the only place I'm seeing it.
Yeah. I think that's the only place.
Under the Legal References.
Under Legal References.
Yep. So we can strike it from there.
Okay. Cool.
So the motion, then, I would ask for a friendly amendment to say, the motion is to approve it with RSA 18613 to struck from the Legal References section.
Of course, you added all those words.
Sorry. It's all good. I just want to be really clear for Ms. Kinsella, so when it goes to the full board, it's going as?
Yeah.
The committee intends.
I just want to be clear, it's RSA 186.
I'm sorry, 13, Roman numeral two.
So I would like to amend the motion and move to approve Policy IHAK with not only the changes mentioned, but also the RSA 23613.
18613.
18613 to be struck through.
I'll second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now, Ms. Raymond, would you like to take over as Chair of Policy?
It's up to you completely. I think you are doing a fantastic job. There's only a couple left.
As much as I appreciate it, I know you know much more of the backstory to a lot of these policies.
Okay.
I always find it fascinating.
All right. So, oh, and you'll see in the, in the packet, we included the sample policy to it. That's, we don't need it. Okay. The next item on the agenda is IKC, Full-Time Student. We had talked about this previously, and it went through the Board, but there was a typo on it. It says, "Beginning with the class of 2025, class rank will no longer be calculated." And as we looked through our prior motions from when we were talking about class rank, the motions were very clear that it was 2024. And so I apologize to the Committee and the Board for not catching that previously. I should have, but I didn't. So.
I mean, all, all nine of us voted on it, and none of us caught it.
Right.
So I don't think you should be apologizing by any means.
But still, so I move that we update IKC so that it is in line with the correct date based on all of our prior motions.
I'll second.
Ms. Lampier, did you want me to take over writing, too, or are you good?
No, that's okay. I got it.
Okay.
Thank you, though.
Yeah. Were you having fun, Ms. Darling?
I'm not going to lie. Once the, like, once I had my first screw-up speaking, I was good.
Excellent.
I was convinced it was going to be on the date, for some reason, in my head. I kept telling myself it was the 22nd, as if I could forget it's Valentine's Day.
I know.
I've got two of the greatest Valentines in the world waiting for me at home.
Oh. Oh, that's really cute.
I bought them cupcakes. I'm excited.
Oh, cute. I sent my kids, so I was up at Concord today, and I, well, Ms. Lampier was finishing writing. I sent my kids a text when they got home from school to be like, "Hey, I put Valentine's Day candy on the mantel, you guys can each have a piece, you know, you don't have to wait till I'm home." And Bree wrote back, she's like, "Oh, I already ate the Skittles." It's like, you got off the bus 30 seconds ago. So, all right. So any other discussion on IKC? No? In that case, all in favor of approving IKC, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Great. Three, nothing. So the next item on the agenda is IKFA, which is Early Graduation. This is a policy that we've had in place since 2009. We double-checked on the RSAs, there aren't any legal updates. You can see the, right behind it, the recommended policy from New Hampshire School Board Associates, New Hampshire School Board Association. And you'll see that ours has really no differences at all between the two of them, or at least nothing, nothing significant. We do have in there that it's a high school, the option is not available for the Core Diploma. Do we still do a Core Diploma? Yeah, we do. That's what that form is. Yeah. I'm sorry, I get Core and High Set confused. High Set is the new GED, right? Okay. So at this point, we're not recommending any further changes.
And I did follow up Mr. Richard and Mr. Burns. They are, this is the policy that they have in place, so students do have to request this prior to it. prior to it. So they want to have some, some notification time so they can plan for that and work with their student family about the possibility of an early graduation.
Yep. So if anybody's watching at home, you have to, if your student has achieved the number of credits that you need to graduate, because they've been taking V-Lax, or they're like really advanced and they're ready to go, you have to submit a request in writing to your principal one semester before you want to graduate. So if you're a junior and you wanted to graduate this spring instead of next spring, you needed to have requested that in the fall, so that there's enough time to do all of the paperwork and the stuff that's associated with that. It's not our, our practice to hold kids back when they are ready to go on to the next step. Although, did, did Mr. Richard or Mr. Burns say how many students take advantage of this?
It's not often that it's happened. I think they reference sometimes some student who may be, be joining the military. It was the example that they used that they remember, but it's not common practice.
Okay.
You know, I think with the example that I know I used, maybe there was a, you know, an athlete who was leaving school after first semester to enroll in, at their college for the, you know, for the January, being in the January semester, that may come up in some instances, but it has not come up recently here in Nashville.
Okay, I was just curious. When I read it, I immediately think of like, you know, Sheldon Cooper from The Big Bang Theory and Young Sheldon. I think of those kids who are just so advanced that they've exhausted all of our curriculum and need the next one, so. So I move that we approve IKFA, Early Graduation, as is.
Second.
I talked a lot. Did anyone else have anything to say? No? All right, all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Okay. The next item on the agenda is KB, which is Title I Parent Involvement in Education. And you'll see that there's a lot of red on this policy. I know that Mr. Poska was working with our Title I Coordinator on this one for quite some time. I think it's been a few months that they've been kind of working back and forth on this one. And we also included in the packet the recommended policy from the School Boards Association for your reference. Do you want to talk to some of the changes that she had recommended? I'm sorry, I've forgotten her name.
Susan Blair. And I'd like to compliment Ms. Blair on providing with the feedback. And to Ms. Raymond's point, I think we've had this on our docket, and I think I may have fallen off the docket at one point with some other policies we've had, but in our last meeting, we made sure we followed through with Ms. Blair. And as you can see from the NHS, from our own policy, this has not been updated since 2008, so it had been quite some time. This Title I practice had been recently revised in 2016. So what we're recommending is that we adopt the recommended policy from NHSBA from 2016. In my conversations with Ms. Blair, we've looked at other, other school districts. They've also adopted exactly what the NHSBA has recommended and what Ms. Blair is saying, this is the policy that we, you know, we've been practicing in place, and this formalizes the practice that we're putting into place on a regular basis.
Thank you, Mr. Poska. And Mr. Castellano, you're allowed to ask questions or contribute if you care to, and just raise your hand like everybody else. One of the things that I noticed about this policy is it talks a lot about parents are going to receive guidance on how they can assist with the education of their children. And it talks about how Title I, it's really important to facilitate parent meetings and other parent involvement. And it talks about how we can use some funds to help with transportation and childcare and stuff. Can you give us an example of what some of our Title I schools are doing already?
I can try. And again, we have, I believe we have five Title I schools at the elementary level with, you know, another one on watch at this time. But again, we get some pretty significant funding from the federal government regarding our Title I funds. And again, what is, what are we doing to supplement our resources for those schools? So it could be, you know, some type of math program. It could be some type of after-school event or program to support the needs of our students in those buildings. Additionally, because they're targeted schools, we have to have kind of surveys among the parents about how we're going about doing this and report that back to the federal government. So it is part of the Title I grant. And as grants, we're always, you know, we're evaluating the effectiveness of the programs we're putting into place, particularly at those elementary schools where there are no Title I schools identified at the secondary level. So this is really predominantly at our, you know, it is at our elementary level at this time.
Thank you. I remember when my kids were at Birch Hill, it wasn't a Title I school at the time, but it was on the watch list. And they had like STEAM night where you went in and they had various math activities and science activities, and there were stations. And I remember Mount Pleasant used to do a STEAM day on a Saturday where families could come in and do like different kinds of science experiments with their kids. That was really fun. That was probably two or three years ago. I mean, it was pre-pandemic.
But those are, those are excellent examples of some type of the Title I events that, you know, again, they're doing some of those things in school, but then they're, you know, involving the family into the event and having those night events to showcase those things and bring the families into the school as part of the process.
I do believe it was last year that Dr. Crisp had an event. They brought an author and, and he read this children's book to the students and all the parents were invited in and they made it a whole big fun thing and all the kids walked away with a book.
Oh, that's really cool.
So, yeah, it was a great event. I totally forgot about that.
Oh, fun, all right. So, so I know that we were trying to make the language more inclusive in our policies and use like parent and guardian.
Okay.
Instead of just parent and the, I mean, the title is, the title of it is parent involvement. I didn't know if that was something we wanted to change before we approved it, or if that's just, you know, easier to, you know, to read. Yep, I am 100% in favor of doing a search and find the word parent and replace it with parent slash guardian. So I think that's something that the software Ms. Kinsella uses allows her to do fairly easily. So if that's something that we want to do, I support it. Anybody else?
Instead of parent slash guardian, would you guys want to do family involvement? Because it looks like family and community engagement is like the biggest key thing that kind of pops out.
Let me check.
In here. And where it's talking about events, I know the events that we've kind of listed here have been ones that families are invited to, not just the parents.
I'm looking at the NHSBA one, and they call it family and community engagement, which I like. But then they tend to switch back and forth between family and parents.
They do.
Because I know that, for example, the annual meeting, it says, number one, involve parents in the joint development of the Title I program plan. If, if there are other family members, like, you know, involving Uncle Joe doesn't count for the purposes of the Title I grant unless Uncle Joe's also the guardian. So we might need to have some term regarding parent or guardian for those items to make sure that we're meeting the conditions of the grant. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I can follow up, Ms. Kinsella tomorrow, we can follow up. But I think the point is that you want it, parent slash guardian at the very least.
At the very least, but if we can call it like fa, you know, Title I family involvement, that would be better.
Yep. Yep, can do that.
Thank you, Ms. Lampier. Does that satisfy you?
Yeah, that does, yeah.
Okay, all right. So I move that we approve KB with some language changes. One, that we call it Title I Family Involvement in Education. And two, that we utilize parent slash guardian in, instead of the word parent through the body.
I'll second.
Is that the last one? You guys are flying without me. See, you don't need me.
It's only because I did not have any of the fun bits that you have.
Could we, have we voted on this?
No, not yet. I was letting, I said a lot of words for Reagan to, for Ms. Lampier to write down, and I was giving her a chance to do that.
Could you say changing?
Changing parents to parents and guardian, is that how you said it? Yeah. Parents slash guardian or? I have tons of confidence in Ms. Kinsella's ability to do that in a way that's rational. All right, so all in favor of approving IHAK as we just discussed, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. You mean KB.
What? Oh, okay, no, sorry. All in favor of approving KB as we just discussed, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Dog. Oh, if you look here in the, in our agenda, it says Title I Family and Community Engagement.
Yeah.
We already knew what change we needed to make.
Right. Just very intuitive. Okay, so that is all I had for tonight.
If, just as, some of the discussion that we had on the first policy.
ACE.
ACE. You know, when we, when we met to talk about, we talked about, there's a, from the NHSBA, there's a brief blurb that kind of references, asking you to, you know, reference back to your old procedural hand gods handbook. Ms. Lampier is, you know, and Ms. Darling have both recommend, you know, recommending, can we look at the, what that handbook looks like? I think, you know, the recommendation was, what we have in place is, is easy to read. Do we, can we find something that's also easy to read as well? And if that is, can we incorporate that in that? So the recommendation was made to, for me to go back and look at the procedural handbook, safeguard handbook, see if it's easy to kind of cut and paste in, or if it is kind of wordy, can we just be, you know, kind of go with the recommendation from HBSA of just, hey, it is referenced in, you know, there's an opportunity for you to reference it, you know, in the New Hampshire Department of Education procedural safeguards handbook. So we can go the easy one, or if the other one isn't so wordy and it kind of fits our needs, can we incorporate that into our policy?
So did you all table it?
Yes.
Perfect. Perfect, we'll bring that, we'll take a look at that and bring it back.
Yep.
Just some other things. I received some requests from the community regarding, Hudson has a policy for if a student is an athlete, either through school athletics, or if they play on a town league team, they're able to get PE credits based on that participation. So I have taken upon myself to agree to look up Hudson's policy and then talk to Mr. Poska and Ms. Jengris and all that stuff, and bring, and probably the NHSBA, and bring all that research to the committee once I have gathered it together. So I don't know if that will be March or April, depending on how much stuff there is. But I will do a deep dive in, not just Hudson, but I'm going to look at the other school districts around New Hampshire to see how many people have that policy, how's it working for them? And I'll bring all of that to the committee for a future meeting as soon as I have information on that. It's the first time I've had someone from the community be like, hey, have you considered making a policy for this that wasn't like about cell phones? So I'm pretty excited about the idea of looking into it, and I will give you guys all the information upcoming.
CronVal does have that policy still, and I know I utilized it all four years of high school because you were not getting me to run in shorts in front of my classmates, ever. But because I was a cheerleader and I was on the varsity team, it was okay to run in front of them. Teenagers are weird. But because I was in varsity, they gave me the PE credit for that. And oddly enough, I just had community members come to me last week over asking about the possibility of incorporating martial arts and self-defense, especially where it helps with discipline and children who aren't necessarily on the most disciplined path at the moment. It kind of helps them bring their brain together and learn how to use it in a constructive way. So I didn't know if that was ever a class that we've ever even considered in place of PE.
I don't know. That is probably a good one to email over to the Curriculum Committee, to Ms. Brown and Dr. Sarfey.
Bring it to her tomorrow.
And then, and see, I know that we've had, I mean, there are a number of students who go here who take martial arts outside of school. And I know that there are students that teach martial arts outside of school as well. One of my neighbors teaches over at Tokyo Joe's, and he's 15, I think, or 16 years old, but he's got like his second black belt or something crazy. But it will be interesting to see what curriculum thinks about developing a course or not and how that fits in, and how that fits in with Dr. Andre's personnel plan, and it's interesting.
I think we have had preliminary conversations about that with the state. There's a Learn Anywhere program that is sponsored by the National Educational Department that kind of, to the point that you're making, is taking some outside experiences and then providing some credit for it and what competencies does it meet. So there is probably down that, you know, to Ms. Raymond's point, I think it probably goes down that curriculum path, but there's some, some work on the backend that has to occur for that to happen. I think it's a, you know, it's an opportunity for, for students to look at something and engage with what they like and receive credit for it. We have not figured out where that fits into what we do here in Nashville, but we've had preliminary conversations, and the state is promoting programs of that nature at this time.
I wrote it in my notebook, so I'll remember it and follow up.
A lot of it has come from people who are complaining about the bullying situation that we have at a lot of the schools and being like, if only the kids knew how to defend themselves properly and how does that work? And.
I don't know if encouraging kids to fight more will solve our bullying issues, but...
I think it would depend on the methodology used and like, because I know when Kayden did karate, it was, they were very strict on a policy of talk, tell, tackle. First you talk to the bully, then you have to tell a teacher. And if you are still being physically harmed, that is when you can tackle and have my support as a parent.
Right. Yeah, when my kids did, my kids did karate for years and years too, and same kind of thing. Talk it out first.
Oddly enough, as many times that kid has been bullied, he doesn't hit back. And I'm glad for it because I know that he knows how to.
Right.
So, I don't know. It's interesting to think of what, what might work and what might not.
Okay, and so then I have some others coming down the pike that we are, we've got a couple HR policies that I've asked Mr. Poska to send over to our HR Director and Dr. Andre. I think when I came in, you guys were working on the DI's, so that's good. And then we've got some more I policies coming up as well. And then I think in March, we're talking about looking at some athletics policies with Ms. Jengris. So if anybody has anything else they want me to look at, please let me know. Send me an email, drop me a phone call, whatever, and I will put it on my queue for us to begin researching it so we can bring it to a, a meeting in the future.
Speaking of bullying, do we have a policy on bullying?
So we have policy JIC, which, which is our student behavior guides, and that covers it.
Yes.
There are specific items under JIC that are directly in reference to bullying. And then we added something a couple of years ago regarding filming incidents of fighting and bullying because that's not cool, so. I'm just always so grateful they didn't have those cell phones when I was in school. It's just so terrible. I don't know how, I don't know how you guys do it, Dante. No, me neither.
I remember back in the day when it was, you know, you, you see a fight and you'd immediately turn the camera on more for police evidence, not for social media.
Right, that's not.
So, social media.
Yeah, social media is something else. And I have gotten a lot of emails from community members asking about our student behavior policies. JIC, there's been a lot of chatter on social media with people concerned. And I will just say that JIC is something that I think is constantly under review by administration and by the principals to see how, is it working, what's not working? You know, and so in, in the case of recent issues that maybe have popped up, that have gotten attention, I can say that, that administration has been following JIC, and it's very clear it lays out a pathway for how, depending on what the infraction is, what the consequence will be. And we're also utilizing our new out-of-school suspension program, Project Succeed. I just had like a brain complete blank. Project Succeed to do some of those wraparound services. And if the police are involved, I learned last week that juvenile justice has a whole new process at the state level. So if a student is engaged in violent behavior, that not only do they have the consequences through JIC and our... through JIC, and our consequences within school that we can't disclose ever to the public because of federal pupil protection and privacy laws, that the juvenile justice system now has a whole process where they do like a clinical analysis of the student and what's going on in the student's life, and then can make referrals to wraparound services to take, take in some of those outside-of-school influences that might be impacting kids' behaviors. So I'm feeling really actually positive about the direction in which the state is going as far as juvenile behaviors that cross the line to the extent that the police get involved. So, any other questions or comments for tonight?
I actually just had one real quick. So basically, it's just about the attendance policy. I was wondering if that's like being enforced or anything like that, if there is one, at the high school level at least.
Do we have an attendance policy at the high school?
I believe we still do and that we still have truancy letters, I believe. I don't know what the policy is for how many days need to be missed before they get used, or if that's excused, unexcused.
Let me just, I'll pull it up. So it would be under the Js, I think, or the Is.
JH.
Look at you, right on top of it. JH. Yep, student attendance, there it is. So we reviewed this one in May of 2022, so it's not very old. And we know that state law, RSA 193-1 and RSA 189-1 require students to attend school until they turn 18 or graduate, whichever comes first. And in some cases, 21, but we're not going to get into that. If students miss five days, a letter goes home. If they miss 10 days, another letter goes home. And then they have to eventually notify DCYF if a student misses. I don't know what the policy says. I'm trying to find it right now. It doesn't say a number where they have to notify DCYF. But I think each school has their own kind of keeping an eye on it. Usually, when I worked at DCYF, it was like 15 days to 20 days, where they would then have a DCYF worker or a truancy officer go out and check on the student. The policy says that the superintendent is supposed to give us a report every January and June of what the absences are looking like. So I don't know if Dr. Andre knows that. We should probably tell him. Are you finding that kids are struggling with absences this year?
Well, I wouldn't necessarily say struggling, but just some students, I don't know. I know like, some people, they, they feel they don't need to go, for example, to like their first class because they can just do everything kind of on their own, or, I don't know. And it just doesn't seem like there's any consequences for that kind of stuff.
So we do give teachers the discretion to make rules for their own classroom. If you miss more than 20 days of school, you can be barred from extracurricular activities. And I know that our athletics policy already says that if you don't go to school that day, or even part of that day, you can't participate in your after-school activity. And if you don't participate enough, then you can't play, right? If you don't go to the practices, then you can't play. We're pretty strict with our student athletes.
Yeah.
Dr., Mr. Poska, do you know about, if there's anything in the handbook about how many absences a student has before it affects their letter grade?
I don't think we have it formally in the, in the handbook.
Yeah, because I think it, I mean, a lot of it depends on what you're missing it for too, you know? We don't want to take kids who are struggling with their mental health or struggling with a health condition and say, well, you've missed too many and now you have to fail, if they're still getting As and Bs on the exams.
Yeah, I guess it's probably different now than it was in the past as well, with a lot of the stuff, you can do it online or whatever.
But still...
It's easier to make up work, but...
Yeah. Mr. Poska, do you mind following up with the principals and asking them if they're seeing any trends and if there's any assistance the board or the policy committee can offer?
Sure, I think, just anecdotally, I think we've seen, obviously, a much improvement in attendance this year as opposed to last year. I think if we, you know, I was just jumping into policy JHA, which kind of details more about those letters that you were referring to, Ms. Raymond, and when those are sent out. But I think overall, it's really working with the student and the family about what is preventing the student from attending school, you know? And I think, you know, and then what interventions can be put into place. Some may work better than others. And then, you know, talking about, you know, other options, you know? I think to what Dante is talking about there, you know, where there's V-Lax options, there's, you know, some students, you know, decide to, you know, attend homeschooling through that. So what does that possibly look like going forward? And I think there's, you know, once you get to the high school level, there is more options available for students to fit their needs and their pathways as opposed to what the other levels.
Right, but I definitely wouldn't endorse just skipping first period every day or skipping fourth period every day. That's not a good habit to have. And I know that, because I have a student at North, if he has an appointment or something in the morning and I don't, sometimes even when I do call, I still get the call saying that he was absent for the day, so.
I make fun of that call because it gets, it pronounces Caden's name, Caden.
Oh.
Caden is absent from school today.
I've called the school before and been like, uh-uh, I dropped him off.
Should, that's...
I watched him walk in the building. Is he really not there?
I would say, my, my little sister once went into the building, she turned around, she left, she was only in second grade. My mom got the phone call being like, she's absent today. They almost drained a dang pond looking for her, and she was at her best friend's house trying on swimsuits.
Right, well, I think part of, that's part of the reason why they have that automated call is so that parents can keep track of those things. So, go ahead, Mr. Castellano, I didn't mean to cut you off.
Oh, yeah, no, I was just saying, yeah, I was, I wasn't talking about more like V-Lax or those kind of, I know those are options in homeschooling. I just mean like, some students definitely just skip a class because they feel they don't need to be there. And I just feel like that doesn't really prepare them for, like after school, like what life is like after high school and stuff like that.
It might prepare them for college, but certainly not a job. So I don't see too many employers who look kindly on people who just don't show up routinely. All right, I don't have anything else for y'all. If you, like I said, if you have anything else you want me to add, that includes coming from students, let me know. I did hear that the Student Senate over at North wants to have coffee available to students, and so I expect that we may get something from them eventually, looking into a policy allowing that. So that'll be interesting.
Don't allow coffee.
No.
Wait, does that apply to coffee like sold at the school?
Yes.
Because they definitely, okay, because people can still bring in their own coffee, right?
Well, you're not supposed to, but yes, I don't think that the, the teachers in the high school are, are doing that. But yeah, there was a Nutritional Standards Act passed by the USDA several years ago that, that limited the amount of sugar and caffeine and calories that drinks can have in schools. And so when I was a kid, and I know, Ms. Diling's significantly younger than me, so I don't know if it was still like that when you were a kid, but when I was a kid, they had soda machines and candy machines in all the schools, and now we can't do that because there's too many calories in those drinks.
I was just going to ask if we have vending machines in our schools with snacks and sodas and stuff, because that's where I first started drinking Mountain Dew.
So we do down the hall here, but they have like water and some juices, but even juices a lot of times have too much, like the calorie and the sugar count is too high for the amount of ounces.
I think we expect too much from people to not caffeinate them from an early age.
Well, I did a deep dive for, I got a request for what's the law, and so I looked into the law, and there's a whole nice handout that the USDA has about how many ounces of, how much sugar and how many calories per ounce of caffeinated drinks are allowed in schools. So we might see that come up at some point. I'm neutral. All right, with that, I move to adjourn.
I second.
Great. All in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We adjourned at 7:05.